All right, we're going to start the meeting with the pledge allegiance as we all do. If everyone could join us. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay. Actually, before we start, we have, usually we go right into public comments, but I have a little something that I wanted to read into the record and have become part of the minutes. During our last meeting on Tuesday, November 27th, I allowed my personal frustration with a few select people within a specific exposed social media group to get the better of me, and I referred to that group of people as clowns. That was obviously an unacceptable behavior and a poor choice of words, poor choice of words on my part. Tonight, I offer my apologies to my fellow selectmen and to anybody else in the town of Maynard who was offended by my choice of words, and you can rest assured that that behavior will not be repeated going forward. So, now we're going to take some public comments. Can't top that, Vic? Can you pass it to Becky? All right, anybody else with public comments? By the way, all right. Okay, so that's out of the way. Anyways, so we're gonna, we're gonna swear in some firemen, so Chief, you'll lead us in the, is Diane here? Yep, she's here. All right.
Well, tonight we're swearing in two firefighters, Daniel Argul and Justin O'Baer, and two captains.
We're going to do captains first.
Diane?
And you got a microphone.
Oh, you want to do it?
It's an acting rule. Yeah.
Do you need someone to hold it for you?
Yes, can you please? I guess I don't need to. Thank you, Chief.
Do you, Dan? No, no. Michael Parr and John King solemnly swear to do your duty as captain for the Town of Maynard Fire Department to the best of your ability to serve the citizens of the Town of Maynard with compassion, courage, and integrity, and to uphold the laws and constitution of the United States of America, the state of Massachusetts, and the Town of Maynard.
I do.
I got it on the record.
All right, here. Dan, I mean, Michael and John.
Somebody said on these things.
All right, to Jane, you're right. Do you solemnly swear to do your duty as firefighters for the Town of Maynard to the best of your ability to serve the citizens of the Town of Maynard with compassion, courage, and integrity, and to uphold the laws of the Constitution of the United States of America, the state of Massachusetts, and the Town of Maynard? Yes, Dan and Justin. Congratulations.
Thanks, Chief.
Thanks, Chief.
Congratulations, Sheldon.
Congratulations. Is the chief standing for this next item?
Yeah.
No, I was just wasn't sure. I'm not letting them forget, that's why. I think, Chief, I think you're up with the C M E R A. Is that like NIMLAC for firefighters?
Well, no, it's, no. Similar, but.
Similar?
Kind of, but not.
Kind of, but not.
Well, I don't know. Seems similar, but.
It is similar. So, SAMARA is Central Middlesex Emergency Response Agency, and that's a group of cities, well, towns and towns that got together back in, I want to say, 2010 or '11, and they work with professional ambulance, and professional ambulance supplies, advanced life support services to those communities. Back before that, prior to that, Emerson used to provide it, but Emerson found that they couldn't sustain it, so they gave six months' notice, and this group was kind of thrown together at the last minute. But overall, it's worked out well. So, SAMARA is, again, I think there's six or seven communities left in it. We keep adding and subtracting, so it's not, not a constant number. So, professional ambulance provides ALS intercept, which is paramedics, and in addition to that, they provide billing services for all the communities that participate. They offer EMD for all the communities that participate, and they offer training to all the communities that participate. So, it's more than just paramedic response. You did get a memo on the rate hikes, so I can do my best to answer any questions you have, but they're really pretty straightforward.
I had a question about the EMD real quick.
Sure.
Do we take advantage of that?
We do, yes.
Cool.
We took advantage of that as we started transitioning to civilian dispatch.
Yeah.
That's when they began offering it, so we kind of just slid right in there, and it works out very, very well.
Perfect, yeah.
Chief, what percentage of what we, of what we obtained as, as a member in SAMARA that we get relative to like ambulance receipts, is that where the money goes that comes in?
Yes.
And how much, what percentage of the overall billing do we get?
Okay.
Follow my question.
So, we have a pretty good collection rate, and don't quote me on it, but I believe it's above, it's at 94% or above, which means that for all the bills that we send out, we collect 94% of them, which is very, very good. As far as what we earn on that or what we keep on that, it depends on the nature of the call. So, if it's a basic life support call or Medicare call, we, the Town of Maynard, gets all of that money. If it's an ALS call, PRO gets the money. For whatever calls that we have, that we bill for, we pay PRO 4%. And that doesn't come off the top, we actually pay that separately, but that's how we do it. So, we collect, our collection rate's about 94%, so we end up keeping 96% of what we collect. Did that answer your question?
Yes, it does. The other question I had, or I was on the board when, when the whole thing went down, the prior chief, when we actually created SAMARA, and my recollection at the time, and since we've had discussions since, is that there's a roaming vehicle that goes around the territory, does that still exist?
Yes, there's actually two.
They roam around 24/7, and then when there's a call, they sort of set up a base location where our guys bring the patient to the ALS when it's necessary. Is that accurate? Is that the way it works?
Sometimes it works that way, but basically, they have a station that they keep in Lincoln, and then they have another one in Acton. So, if they're in that, that building in Acton, they usually respond right to the call. If they're tied up at another call or in another community, and we need their services, then we meet them somewhere. It depends on the call and what they're doing at the time. But I would say that majority of the calls, they probably actually meet us here immediately on scene.
And then I noticed that you mentioned Acton, that Acton left the program.
They did.
What did they do? What was their alternative?
Acton decided to go paramedics themselves, so they have, and I don't know the number, I'm going to say eight to 12 paramedics strictly for Acton, which eventually is our goal, but we're not ready to do that yet. That's, that's a big endeavor, and we have too many young firefighters right now to tackle that. Eventually, I'd like to make that happen here, but it's not going to happen for a bit. But Acton did their own, Littleton is another community that pulled out and did their own, they have, they both have paramedics on staff now. That's part of the reason for the increase, because of the revenue loss that PRO saw because of losing those two communities.
So now, because Acton and Littleton have left, they now have to do all their own billing, they don't have the services of EMD and things like that as well that PRO provides, correct?
I don't know if they can pay extra for that. They don't, it's not offered to them anymore because they're not in the group, but they might be able to purchase it, but I can't be sure about that.
And so the three, you said 9% increase, less than 3% a year, so, so obviously, so it's not going up 9% all at once, it's just going forward?
It'll be 9% to be a one-time increase, but that averages to be 3% a year. So, we haven't had an increase in three or four years.
Ah, okay, all right.
And most of this is reimbursed by auto insurance when it's an auto accident and, you know.
Insurance companies, yeah.
Anything else? Greg?
No, no comments.
Just, I mean, just information also.
No, you, you, we are a member of SAMARA, so if anybody wants to attend the next Board of Directors meeting, I'll let you know when that is, and you're more than welcome to go.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. Yes, sir.
How big an increase is this going to be?
I think it says 3%?
9%.
3%, it's 9%, but it's basically 3% per year. That's what the average is, so it's, it's a 9% increase.
Forget about the percentage, Chief. How much money does it amount to?
Depends on what your ambulance service is, but if you get BLS, it's going to be 9% of that, and I don't know what the, the current rate is. I'm going to say it's around $1,250, so it's 9% above that. It's an ALS, it's about 15 and 50.
Because the rates we're, we, as a town, I guess, are charging are pretty well up there.
Well, that's the rate that we're talking about here.
So, you know, if you're, you say 9%, well, what is it amount to in dollars? People don't understand dollars. They don't really understand percentages.
Yep. I, I don't know what the current rates are, to be honest with you.
There was a time, there was a time, I can remember, when Ed King graciously gave us a van for an ambulance, and everybody thought that was a hell of a good deal, and it was. Trouble is, nobody looked from here to there. Who was going to replace it? Who was going to manage? And that, of course, started to roll up to what we have in the department now, okay? Basically, I think most fire departments now don't fight fires, they prefer, provide emergency services.
Yep, that's true.
But the emergency services, you figure the citizens are paying a tax that's supposedly supporting the service, and yet, there's always a charge on top of that. At one time, when it first started, if you couldn't afford it or you had no insurance, they'd just write the thing off. Now, and I pointed that out to you some time ago after having arrived at an ambulance, and I appreciate it, and your people are very good, that the billing company uses some pretty harsh language on a first bill.
Well, and, and when you pointed that out, we corrected that, so they don't use that language anymore. However, if, if somebody can't afford to pay the bill, these guys here have the right to waive that. I can't waive it, but the board can. So, even though that billing company, you know, sends the bills out, if somebody has a hardship, the board can waive that.
Okay, how many times have you had people appear before this board for a hardship for an ambulance or emergency service bill?
Well, I could say zero myself. I don't know if anyone else, I haven't, but I don't know. I don't know that it's, I don't, I don't know, like a lot of things, that a lot of people know they have that at their disposal. Do you know? I don't, I don't know that that's a common knowledge thing, to be honest.
In the old days, Mr. Chairman, we had a town employee that did the billing, and because of these people being longtime residents and knowing the situation with various people in town, all right, they could say to the chief, "Look, these people are having a hell of a hard time, I think we should..." But now it's got to the point where you're appealing and this and that, you're going through piles of paperwork to get something locked up, but I suppose this is the way the system is today, but I, I find it, you know, rather odd that we just got into this, what, how many years ago?
Well, it's been at least 35. It was before I got here, obviously, but I'm going to say it was 85.
In this particular?
ALS company here?
In this particular organization, I think it's fairly new.
2011, I believe. Still before I got here.
But anyway, I can understand they need a rate increase because everything else is going up, but I just wonder what effect it's going to have when people take a ride. Somewhere, somewhere along the way, the insurance companies and stuff will begin to probably say, "Nope, thank you, we're not getting any more of this at all." Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Congratulations on your firefighters.
Okay. On item number four, which are the correspondence items tonight, we have 13 of them, and I make a motion that we move to accept the list of 13 correspondences, A through M. Yes, sir?
A couple of meetings ago, the board signed a new contract with Comcast. Is that correct, if I'm not mistaken? I was hearing.
I don't know if it was the last meeting, the meeting?
Two meetings ago, yeah.
Our last regularly scheduled business, yeah, yes.
Doesn't seem rather odd when you think about it, that everything was hunky-dory, and all of a sudden, we have approved the contract, and now we get the price changes.
I.
Isn't that kind of odd?
Mr. Chairman, you did not have to approve it that evening, so it is still a possibility that it was coincidence. If the board had decided not to approve it that evening and delayed it, that the implication is that they were holding this letter of the price change until the board had approved.
And ironically enough, Verizon, whether they were just not as smart or whatever, but they had recently increased, if you recall at that meeting, I chastised Verizon for their increased prices, and told them that I was disappointed in them.
They were talking about it before they signed the new contract. It's a bit of a difference, you know?
Cable companies, cable companies are going up. That's all it is. I guess we have to make a decision whether we want that service.
Do you want to finish making the motion?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna start, I'm gonna start over. How's that? Move to accept and approve the list of 13 correspondence items, A through M, as presented. Do you have a second?
Second?
Thanks, Melissa. Does anybody have any comments on any of these 13 items?
Have we asked for a formal report, I mean, a formal presentation from the golf course folks?
I haven't yet, but I, I can. I'm, in February is where expected, we're scheduled to do an audit.
We have.
And so I, I would like to do one.
We might have asked for it before you, you came.
Yeah, I.
We've asked for it, we asked for it a while back.
Oh, well.
It has been requested.
I'm more than happy to have it. I'm also curious to get into the books of it, but we are scheduled to get into their books in February, so that's when we'll be taking a deeper dive.
Okay.
But they, apparently, they had not been regularly providing you their monthly reports, and now they are.
And we had, they also used to regularly come in, and we had asked for them to come in, it might have been before your, your appearance.
Yeah, definitely was, right, because I think Terrence actually made the request. But the first request, I think Terrence actually made. Right, so I can have them come in any time if you would like.
That's July or June, but yeah, I mean, February's fine. You're, you're.
Okay, we're good.
I mean, I would like to read the audit first, that's all I'm saying. So, February is when the audit is, and then after that, I'll come up with my recommendation.
Okay.
Is it a third party audit?
Uh, well, yes, because we don't, we're not doing it ourselves. I think it's Terenzio, I think it's our regular. Yeah, Mike Guzzo is finance director.
The way it's set up originally, we set it up every three years, and then periodically I'll look at some of the, you know, what they do, see if there's any kind of questions I have, but, you know, if it would look like to have an audit done every two years or annually, we can do that.
I think the, the point of contention has become the capital improvement in rent lines, how they match, and what makes them match in particular. But, you know that. I haven't, we have, so we have a letter here from the Concorde Select Board. Why is everybody chuckling? Well, anyway, so we have it, and it, you know, it'll be part of another discussion later on, obviously, or whenever, but, you know, clearly, if someone wants those type of things to be looked at, it's, they can pay for it. You want those studies done, have them done.
Well, I think as far as their, their request that they do something with the crosstown connection to alleviate the, the traffic concerns, that's already, that, that is one of the mitigations that is already offered in our MOA, so that part of it is, you know, we're.
I just find it very ironic that they weren't concerned when they built the muse, but that's the concern now.
Well, that's kind of why I'm not overly concerned about, you know, our stance on this letter, other than to go talk about it in depth at another time, but certainly, you know, if they want certain studies done, they, they're more than willing to, more than, you know, I'm more than willing to allow them to do the studies and pay for them. Want a study done, have a study done. I don't know if anyone feels any differently, but. So, that was that. Anything else? Anybody else, any questions on the other 13, any of the other 13 items? Thank you for the management letter. Sometimes we don't see those, but thank you for sending it to us.
They, they said they wanted to come in maybe and talk to us before, you know, so, I'm sorry.
No.
Because last time it was, we were really late with it, so I don't know when we want to do that.
So, we're technically scheduled for them to come in January 2nd.
Oh, perfect.
Okay.
I think we just saw last year's report, like, two weeks.
You did.
Right, yes.
This, this I spoke to y'all as soon as I got there, but, but again, it's.
And that's appreciated.
They're scheduled to come in January.
Perfect, oh, there it is, right there.
Yep, no, it's mine.
Okay. So, any other questions on the correspondence items? No? All those in favor? Thank you.
Did you have a question?
I'm sorry, yeah, when you're talking, were you just now just talking about V, item V, or letter V, or are you talking about a group of these?
This one, the B, the letter from the Town of Concorde Select Board?
Yeah.
That's the, that's the.
That's what you just talked about.
That's what we just spoke about, yeah.
Okay, you're still going to go over these other ones?
No, well, no, is there one in particular you'd like to discuss?
Yeah, I'd like to know more about these marijuana, E and M.
Okay.
What is that about?
So, the, what they're giving us is, they're giving us copies of the legal notices that they, that they're required to do as part of, as, as part of their, their doing business. So, that's all that is in those, is the legal notice, they're just showing thus that they, what? Oh, sorry.
Mike, yeah, so.
Sorry.
So, whenever a dispensary wants to come to town, they have to, under Massachusetts law, post a public notice and hold in a public forum, like a Q and A session for residents, and notify them in some kind of public way to meet the state requirements. So, all this basically is, is a CC to the Board of Selectmen that they're doing that. So, we're being notified that they're, they're hosting that public meeting.
Just, just so you understand, ma'am, the, what we just approved is acceptance of those letters. We didn't vote to approve anything that's on, that's in this list of letters. All we did was recognize that correspondence came in and we accepted it as the Board of Selectmen on behalf of the community. So, the fact that we just voted to accept something has nothing to do with anyone's opinion on any of these issues that are in this list. Does that help clarify?
Yes.
So, so, just to further answer your question, which I think you just asked at the end, the first, one of the meetings was on October, on November 29th, 2018, and the, the one prior to that, the Strongbox Company, that one was.
November 23rd.
November, November 23rd?
Yep.
Yeah, November 23rd, so those meetings have passed.
And what were the results? They just informing people what happened? I wanted to go to that, but I didn't want to.
There were, there were no, the, well, I don't.
I don't know, I didn't attend either. What's your name, ma'am?
Judy Burgess.
Nice to meet you, Judy, so.
Nice to meet you.
I didn't attend. Mr. Chairman, if you'll allow me to speak to what I know.
Go ahead.
I had coincidentally scheduled a site visit for 24 Main Street, which is Green Star, and they said, if I recall correctly, no one came to their public meeting. So, we, we as a town, and I, I did not, besides putting in the selectmen's agenda, they are required by the state, as Selectman St. John was pointing out, to do this public notice, it was not from the town. So, I did not, it's not a public meeting, I mean, it's a public meeting, but it's not a town official meeting, so I didn't advertise it more than just accepting it as correspondence. So, it's their own obligation.
Here again, I did see that, thank you, but, you know, how well was that distributed to you butters? That's not a question that anyone here has to answer, I understand that, but I just feel, I don't know, this is all coming as a big surprise to me, all of this stuff, and I'm wondering how people feel like that.
Yes, sir.
When she gets done? Is she done?
I guess I am.
I don't, I don't know if she's done, I thought, I thought she was. My apologies, if not.
I go back a little ways. When the muse was first proposed in the Town of Concorde, there was a factory up there, in fact, there's still a factory up there, but the main point was that the Town of Concorde's board at that time, I believe it was a Board of Appeals, did not require a traffic study from Powder Mill Road in Acton to Route 2, okay? They attended a public hearing before a three-man Board of Appeals in the Town of Acton and pointed out to them that the Town of Concorde was being kind of a little fuzzy with this thing because they could have sent the traffic in that development out through the Thoreau Hills project. The answer being that they didn't want to disturb a nice residential property. So, the Town of Acton is, and I didn't think they were very wise, they voted to allow the traffic from the muse, from down Powder Mill Road, which is in Acton, and there was, there was no traffic study that I was aware of that did anything as far as traffic going toward Concorde or back toward Maynard. And when I got all done, the chairman of the Board of Appeals told me that I had made a pretty decent presentation, but, because I didn't represent anybody but myself, I had no standing at the hearing. Now, in addition to that, the Town of Concorde is making a lot of noise, and they're recently garaging their whole public school bus fleet on Knox Trail Road, okay, which is bisected by the Town of Acton and the Town of Concorde. And I don't remember seeing any traffic study about what kind of consequences that fleet of buses was going to cause on Powder Mill Road when they came out in the morning or the afternoon. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Did you have anything else? Oh, we're talking about two different things, but, okay. Okay. All right. Minutes, acceptance of minutes, we have minutes from November 20th, 2018, and the motion would be that we move to accept and approve the meeting minutes of November 20th, 2018, as shown. Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on the minutes of the 20th? All those in favor of accepting the minutes? Thank you. Consent agenda is various renewals for commerical licenses, alcohol, package stores, entertainment, class two, lodging, rooming house, automatic amusement, taxi cabin liveries, and we believe we've signed most of those in advance.
We have a couple that you actually signed tonight.
Right. Shall I make a motion that we move to accept and approve the list of board licenses renewals in the consent agenda, consent agenda items as presented?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions about the licenses and the?
Yeah, we've. Yeah, we've, of all the ones that are being approved, that been paid as far as their fees?
No, no. I did show a receipt.
Yes, she shows that.
There's 50% of the money that has been turned in today, so no one can take the licenses that haven't been paid for, so. No tiki, no shirley, as they say.
Sounds good to me.
She takes the minutes, so she can say what she wants.
Run it anywhere you want, but anyways, yeah, so, all right, we don't give them the license till they pay the bill. Sounds good. Um, anybody else have any questions about the consent agenda tonight? All those.
You have a question?
Yes.
These licenses, these are licenses for businesses that have established and have been using them, yes?
These are renewals, yes.
Renewals.
These are for a series of renewals, annual license renewals.
The categories increased or decreased, are they more or less?
I don't believe the categories have changed. You're asking about the pricing?
Pricing or the.
Or the numbers.
The number of licenses available. Which one are you asking, Vic?
I don't think either have changed, really.
No.
So, it's the same. Status quo. So. All those in favor of accepting? Thank you. Okay. Elks, Maynard Lodge Elks would like us to extend their business for one hour on New Year's Eve. So, I read the motion that's moved to accept and approve the one hour extension of closing time at the Maynard Lodge of Elks for New Year's Eve until 2:00 a.m. on New Year's Eve. Okay.
What time do they normally have to close now?
Do you have a second? One.
One o'clock.
Second.
Yep. Do you have a second? Okay. Does anybody have any questions for the Elks since their representative is here? You can come sit up front.
Yeah, my question would be, why?
You gotta introduce yourself first, boy.
Florine Hume-Nick.
Excuse me?
Florine Hume-Nick.
No, I.
Don't make me introduce myself first.
She had to introduce herself, so.
So, I did. Um, we had a request from, we do have a booking for a function that night. We're not going to actually have them there till 2:00. They're going to be done by 1:00, but that key, gives us that timeframe to not be in the wrong at 1:30.
Yeah, when will alcohol stop being served?
At 1:00.
At 1:00?
By.
Okay. I think that was your concern. Yeah.
There's no conflict with state law, is there? Am I doing that? No?
No, it's local licensing authority, direct discretion.
And then it says that typically that they do have a detail that they're.
They do.
Are they, they're planning on having one for this one too?
Without a doubt.
Okay.
It's New Year's Eve.
All right.
That's.
I know that the chief is, he's not in favor? I thought he's.
He had some questions.
Did we answer his questions?
Yes, she answered the questions.
She okay with the end?
Uh, he didn't tell me.
Do we know?
Tell me otherwise. He had questions and she answered the questions.
All right.
That was the question?
There's a lot of, I'm just reading off of what the, I mean.
I, I didn't see the chief's questions. So, I gotta go back in.
Yeah. And you want, do you want me to, I can state the question if you'd like.
No, the chief's question is, is there an event or specific group renting a hall? Are they, are they asking for the members bar? Also, are they planning on hiring a detail officer? Those are his only questions? I don't think.
Great minds.
Okay, so.
Well, I was actually reading it from here, just to confirm it.
Yeah, yep. It was in his packet, but that's, I'm sorry, so I was, it was, we, Becky included in part of the packet, so, but I, we can read those questions a lot if you'd like. Sorry.
I know. That's okay.
Yeah, it's in the packet.
So, there was, so, after Becky's email on Friday, November 16th, 2018, from, well, from the Elks to the chief, there was no response back? No one responded back?
No.
So, I assumed that if no one responded back to the email, that the, the email is, was accepted.
Satisfactory.
Yep. All right. So, all those in favor of an extra hour for the Elks on New Year's Eve? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good New Year.
All right. All right, so we have two volunteers, members, one to the Conservation Commission and one to the Historical Commission. And they appear in the order of the Conservation Commission first, and I'll read the motion. It is that we move to accept and approve Laura Matei to Conserva, to the Conservation Commission. Matei? My apologies. Move to accept and approve Laura Matei to the Conservation Commission with a term expiring June 30th, 2019.
Um, hello, can I talk to me?
Okay. So, Laura, you can, if you'd like, you could come sit up here and we'll grill you for a while and see how it goes.
Hello, everyone.
Hello?
How are you? Very good, thank you.
So, does anybody, would anybody like to start with any questions for Laura?
No, I was just going to say your resume is very impressive, and it seems like you'd bring a lot of skills to the table for this position, and I really appreciate you volunteering. It's nice to fill our committees.
Yes, thank you. I, I'm looking forward to it.
Laura, have you been before the board before with, with another, were you appointed to another committee at one point?
I was not.
You were not? For some reason, the whole Sudbury Valley trustees thing caught me, and somebody else maybe with the Sudbury Valley.
Maybe. There's, there was a few of us who've lived in Maynard, so, yeah.
Becky, who seconded this? Anyone?
I didn't hear a second.
Would someone, I, he started, I think he started talking. Would someone like to second this?
Second.
Just to, just for the record.
Certainly.
Okay, right on, but, um, no, as Justine said, we certainly appreciate everybody that volunteers anytime. So, and then there's, who was it? From Kate, Katie Young?
Yeah, the.
That's.
Okay, okay.
Constitution Planner, Assistant Town Planner?
Yes.
Okay, yeah.
Have you attended some of their meetings?
I went to one so far.
And you came here, so you're in. Okay. Well, if Katie recommends you, I mean, who are we to? But does anyone have any other serious questions or concerns?
I think her resume speaks for itself.
It certainly does. All right, so, all of those in favor of confirming the appointment? Again, thank you very much for volunteering.
Thank you.
And good luck, Katie. Do you have a full board now? Almost? Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Congratulations. You're diligent trying to fill that, aren't you?
Yeah.
There's, we have a few people interested right now.
Nice.
Absolutely, that works. Keep it.
Next is, um, an appointment to the Historical Commission, and it's, um, that we move, motion is that we move to accept and approve John Brandon to the Historical Commission as an alternate with a term of ending on June 30th, 2021. Good evening, John.
Good evening.
Thanks for coming in.
My pleasure.
You didn't second it. No one seconded it.
Who seconded it? Who'd like to second it? Anyone?
I'll second.
Thank you. Thank you. Um.
So, I'll, I'll start. I have a question. Is, so what is your interest in the Historical, Historical Society?
Yeah, well, it's, it's been very interesting. I, I grew up in Sudbury, just across from 117, and spent a lot of time coming to Maynard over the last 25 or so years that I grew up there. Um, I liked it so much that I've moved to town now that I'm an adult and live in one of our fantastic 100-year-old houses and.
Excellent.
You know, that, that really kind of inspired my interest in researching more of the history of my house, which in turn inspired me to research the history of the town. It's all kind of interconnected and, you know, you look at old census records from 100 years ago and find out that, you know, someone in your house operated a movie theater in town or worked at the mill in town, and it, it just kind of draws on itself and draws you in to be interested and learn more about the town. All, all I have to do is go into my basement and look at like the 100-year-old tree trunk that holds up, holds up my house and go, wow, this tree must have been cut down like in the winter of, you know, 1910, and here it is still doing good service today. So, just, just kind of like the, the nature of the town, having moved here, has, has really kind of interested me in the history of the town. And, you know, we have such a great Historical Society website right now that has a lot of information and pictures and articles archived just at your fingertips if you just want to search or look through it. So, I, I've, you know, I've definitely gone down the rabbit hole in terms of just looking up information on the town and on different streets, and I've started attending Historical Commission meetings and, you know, after, after I was there for maybe the third meeting, you know, they started saying to me, hey, we, we have some openings for alternate members. Would you, would you consider, consider filling one of those?
That's, see, that's what happened to me, too. No, I'm kidding. You go to a certain amount of meetings, you get sucked in.
Do you have a tree trunk in your basement?
I did, no, I don't.
Well, you know, it's, I'm sure you know, um, it's an exciting time in Maynard's history for a number of reasons, but, you know, we're approaching our 150th, which I'm sure this group will, will be involved in, although we have another group that's, that's really coordinating it. And there are so many people in this town, for whatever reason, you know, history is always important regardless and.
For sure.
But so many people that are really into Maynard's history, and I'm sure you've met some of them, but it's, you know, David Mark, who, who I'm sure you've met, who writes the stuff and, and, you know, there's just so many, I couldn't name them all, but the, the, Into the Cemetery and everything, so it's a great group of people to get involved in, and there's so much to find, so.
Yeah, yeah, I've been having a lot of fun at, at the meetings and, you know, that's, that's the best when, if you're doing volunteer work, it's fun as well, so.
Yeah. It's kind of ironic, I'm looking at your, uh, letter that you served as an intern here in town.
Yeah, that's right. Uh, maybe, maybe 10 years ago or so, I think Kathleen O'Day was Assistant Town Manager at the time, and I, I was going to go to law school a couple of months from then, and I was on like a summer break period between college and law school. And I was, I was reaching out for local opportunities just to, you know, do volunteer work, but also maybe if there was a, you know, a government or a legal angle to it, and Kathleen, the Assistant Town Manager at the time, said, oh, yeah, back when I used to, you know, work for, work, work, work in these other areas, we used to have interns, we, we should have an intern, why don't you come here? We can't, we can't pay you, but, you know, we'd be happy to have the help. So, uh, you, I, I just kind of helped out on a variety of random tasks that summer.
Anybody else have any questions for John?
It makes me feel old because I was on the board when Kathy O'Day was our Assistant Town Administrator, so.
She's been part of the Historical.
Yeah. She's now in Bill Ricker. I don't know if you're aware of that.
Yeah, yeah, I, I understand. That's where she is now.
Yeah.
All right. All right, anyone else have any questions for John? All those in favor? All right, well, thank you very much, John, for volunteering and look forward to.
Good luck. Have fun.
Look forward to it.
Thank you.
Yes. Number nine. Discussion for the, for the next host community agreement. And the motion is, um, move to approve the host community agreement with Green Star Herbals for a proposed registered marijuana dispensary to be located at 24 Main Street, Maynard. Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Conversation.
Me, I personally, just taking a look at that little video tour that he gave us. I was kind of impressed with the way it's, if it's going to look like that, I think it's going to look very professional and.
Oh, the, 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 kind of an electric power plant.
Electric power plant, yeah.
It looks like that. It's going to cost somebody a lot of money, I can tell you that.
To put it together like that, you're saying? Yeah, that's. But it's, I've seen the ones that they did in Lester, they did in Northampton, and they, actually, the one in Northampton looks probably close to what this is proposed to look like, so.
Mm-hmm. I agree. It's, it's a professional, um, presentation for sure.
Is Thomas Morey associated at all with the former tavern? No.
No.
That's funny, because I was asked the same question.
I never thought about that.
What's, what's?
It's connection.
What's Morey, what's the brother that's, you know, I know the young people. What's the older brother's name? Wasn't his name Tom as well?
For Paul Morey?
Paul's, Paul's older brother's name.
Well, I thought that was a David.
Oh, is it David? That's right. Maybe it was David Morey. That's right. It was David. I thought, I thought it was his brother, and then, so then I saw the other name for the other thing, and I thought they were, and I see. Okay, so.
So, Mr. Chairman, I just want to.
Yeah.
Clarify. You could approve this, this evening if you would like, but they, we are also scheduling, uh, Mr. Morey.
For the 18th?
To come on the 18th. This is more like an introduction to the host community agreement, but you could approve it this evening.
I mean, I don't.
We're not in a rush, I think, I.
Not in a rush, and we haven't met him yet.
Exactly.
We met the others, and so we, we can just, we can just cancel the motion and, and just table it until the 18th.
Exactly. Substantially, it's the same as the Willspring.
Yeah. But it will be, you know, we'll have the opportunity to ask some of the questions that we asked the, the prior applicants and just get, get, you know, whatever answers we want.
Do we have any, you did the tour of the facility, right?
I did it twice.
Okay, are the, I assume chief went from the police station or someone from the police station?
Chief came the first time, but, uh, Fargee came with me. Yep.
Are they going to submit anything to us about any concerns they have about security of the building or anything?
They absolutely could, but they haven't seen their security plans yet. So, in fact, right now, it's still occupied by the current, um, it's the chive, it's like the.
The die. Courier and chives.
Oh, right.
Courier and chives.
Like, they're all still there. So, but from, I mean, I think you should ask chief directly, or chief can provide you, um, his response, but from, I think at that time, we had not yet seen those plans. But, um, he, he's, he has concerns, uh, but he appreciates the location more than the, their.
The Nason one.
Header on Nason Street because it's isolated, it's offset from Main Street, it has its own parking, and it, they bought the whole building.
Wouldn't it make sense to invite the chief to the 18th so that we?
Absolutely.
Okay, ask a question. That'd be great.
Not a problem.
What is the, um, the anticipated turnaround time, for lack of a better phrase, for, for example, the one that we've previously discussed on Main Street?
For Nason?
Uh, Nason Street, rather. As far as when the reality is that that place would.
Good question, and I've been, I've been kind of wondering the same thing, but it's, uh, difficult to say because they haven't done any work to it. So, they haven't, following the, um, following your approval of the host community agreement as well spring of 4 Nason Street, we had to submit to the cannabis control permission of the state, the certification that we had approved, as well as a copy of the host community agreement for their authentication, their approval. Once that is approved, and I don't know what the turnaround time is, there's a lot of unknowns, that's all I want to tell you. There's a lot of, don't know how long their process is going to be, um, then they have to submit a, uh, they have to submit to the planning board for a special permit for them. I don't know how long that may be. I don't know what, how long the process is going to take. But then they would eventually come back to you for an actual license, but even that is contingent upon approval of a security plan by the chief of police, which they have not even submitted. So, then they haven't done any work. As I drive by or walk by, I can see that they have some chairs set up in there, but they haven't done anything to the building. So, um, it'd be months away, but I don't know, and that's a good question. It's, um.
The, you know, the, the, there's a number of concerns that have been expressed, but the, um, the thing we see on the news about the two that have opened, I think there's, um, you know, and really, it's just one of them that has. Lester's the one that's. Lester's the one that, that's had the issues with the overwhelming, and I think it's pretty clear from when you see the photographs of what goes on, the overwhelming traffic and whatever to their small community. My sense is that if this is months away, that the, um, the number of these in eastern Massachusetts will probably increase to an extent where not every single person that's looking to get their first legal purchase is traveling to one location. But I do think we need to be at least prepared for, uh, because there's no on-street parking that's going to be available for that, you know, and, you know, Lester apparently has some satellite parking that they're doing, and shuttling people to there. I'm sure that's expensed on to the business.
I would, that would be for us.
Yeah, that's, that's what they're doing.
Yeah, and God knows where we would, if we had to do that, where we would satellite or suggest they satellite.
Right, I would allow, I wouldn't make those coordinations.
Yeah, that's not us.
But I think to David's point, I think by the time this gets approved, it'll be not as, because right now, you only have two in the whole state.
It's novel.
Yeah, right, so, so by, by the time these get approved, I'm sure we're going to lesser of the impact. of the impact to a degree, I'm going to think, yeah.
But as surrounding towns are.
Yeah, well, because they're not getting.
As we are.
The third one, I think the third one opens the end of this week.
All right. It's going to speed up from what I'm.
Essentially, these are good questions, I don't know.
Right.
It's a, it's, I'm not sure.
I think Kate did comment, though, when she was here as counsel, that the state process could take months and months for them, just to even get through that next level.
Right.
And I've heard that there's such a backlog of other people trying to get them through in other towns, that they're just, there's not going to be like a quick turnaround for us.
Plus the holidays.
Yeah.
I mean, like this, I used to work for the state, like, they, they take their holidays, you know?
Probably know it'll be summer and everyone's on vacation, so.
Right, so a lot of unknowns, but I, I, I wanted the same questions, and I, and I'll find out what I can.
Excuse me?
Yes.
This one that you're talking about here, 9A, you mentioned Courier and Izzer, and there is something that whoever, is that the, used to be the bowling alley?
Yes.
Okay, that one I could see more than this one on Nason, I don't understand why anybody even thinks that's appropriate, honestly.
Unfortunately, it's one of those things that we don't get to say, we don't get.
It's a retail store, so basically.
If it's a use that's allowed in that zone, we don't get to say.
Kind of like 10,000, we have three.
We don't have three.
Coming in?
No.
Okay, this from Bowling Alley, Nason Street.
That's it.
And that's it.
And the McDonald Building.
No.
No, 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 no.
Nothing, there's nothing on there that I know of.
Well, there's two on Main Street, one is the bowling alley thing in the back end.
The second, the second, the second, the second thing, it was on the, one of those, it was one of those legal things that we talked about earlier, that's a gentleman who's looking to have an, maintain his office in that building, and he has to have permission to maintain his office in that building, because he's going to provide transportation for people in the marijuana business, he's going to.
But it's an administrative office.
Yeah, there's not going to be, there will be no marijuana in that building.
Which one are you talking about? You're talking about the?
That was, fourteen Nason Street.
Okay, but there were two mentioned on Main Street.
No, there's only one.
No, there's only one.
The only Main Street one is the.
Just so happens, the address is 2224, so maybe you're thinking that it's two, I don't know.
What are the numbers on Nason then?
Four.
Four. And fourteen. Fourteen is Strong Box, and then four is.
Fourteen is in the old theater building.
Yes.
And that's just the administrative office.
That's correct.
Who is the owner of the Nason Street?
Which Nason Street?
The potential, the meeting place.
Okay.
The owner, I know, I don't know, I know the managers who are leasing, Wellspring is the name of the company, and that's Dr. Stephanie Lipton and her partner, Olaf.
Wellspring is, is for Nason Street?
Yes.
For Nason.
Yeah.
And they're located in Acton just over the line.
That's their medical.
That's their medical facility.
The Massacre's not allowing, as far as we know so far.
So they're allowing, they're allowing medical.
They voted last night to not approve retail establishments in Acton.
But we have.
We have already voted.
We've already done that.
We, as a, we voted as a town.
But that was a town vote.
The community of Maynard voted on this, on a referendum.
When was that?
We've, two years ago.
Two years ago.
No, the state level.
No. It's individual community, it was, it was statewide election, but the results were specific to each individual community. So, Maynard residents voted in, Maynard residents voted during a state election to allow marijuana retail sales in Maynard. It was not a state referendum, it was a local referendum on the state ballots, basically.
Okay, thank you, so the other towns that are fighting this surrounding us, they didn't say yes?
Some did.
So the way, the way that came down was the, the state had a unique approach to it, because there was some controversy about the whole thing, obviously, and what they decided to say was that if your community, during that statewide ballot election, voted favorably for marijuana, that there was, in order to block, to use, for lack of a better phrase, block the facilities from coming to your community, you had to go through a process. That process was a vote at town meeting, or if it's a city, it's a different procedure, followed by a vote at the ballot box to approve or disapprove coming into the town for retail establishments. If your community voted against it, all it required was a vote of the executive board, namely, the Board of Selectmen. So in Maynard, because our town voted to approve overall at the statewide election, in order for us to block it, we would have had to go through that two-pronged process, the vote at town meeting and the vote at the ballot box. Town meeting, then, we never had, had the actual vote to approve the sale or not approve the sale, instead, we went straight to zoning, and there was, there was a discussion, I don't know if you were at the town meeting, there was a discussion about the zoning, there was a discussion about where to zone the, the particular businesses, and actually, this discussion came up at town meeting, one particular resident stood up and argued, as you are now, for a location like that, and there was no support from the town meeting voters. So it was a town meeting.
That was the one in March, the end of March?
Yes.
And I have to find the minutes, I think somebody gave me some link or something.
I sent the link to the, to the actual meeting.
To the video?
Yeah, yeah.
I'll get you the minutes, we're working on, you are correct, the minutes were not on the website, and they should have been, and we are, we will get that up there as soon as possible.
So.
How many people were at that meeting, would you say?
That was.
A pretty largely attended meeting because of the issue.
Pretty full meeting.
Wow, I can't even believe I could have missed something like that, honestly, but okay, I did, not that apparently if one person was feeling as.
It was our annual, it was our annual town meeting, so it was.
No, it was a special meeting.
Was it a special?
Yeah, it was in March.
And usually, those are well advertised, so somehow, I owned that I missed it, other people have said that too, but okay, I just cannot, I'm shocked at this location, and I see a tie in here, Wellspring Acton, Wellspring here, I just, I'm just very sad about it, really am, that location. So, somebody can rent, you have no, I get that, okay, I want to rent a building, I'm going to pay the money, town doesn't have to know who's renting there, right? Right?
If it's zoned to allow for that particular type of a business at that particular location.
There's no cap yet here on the.
Correct. We have had that discussion about.
Yeah, should. I just.
We've had a discussion.
Shocked, shocked, shocked at this, and it's not because I'm of this vintage, it's the big picture. Okay.
Okay. So we're going to see him on the 18th.
Yes.
So you got to, there's no vote on this?
No, we, so we, we withdrew the motion, and we'll reschedule this motion, this discussion for the 18th.
Yep, and again, you don't even have to vote that, I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah, right. Okay. All right, number 10. Can you continue the discussions on Powder Mill?
So in, with, Mr. Chairman, with the, with the board's guidance, I reached out to Mr. Joel Kahn, representing the owner and the development of Powder Mill Place, asking for their consideration of the reduction of the scale of the project, particularly in regards to the height, and I provided his response to the board and the board documents.
Did you say that that was in the board, it was replied, sorry.
Yeah, it's in, it's the last item.
I think it's this one, the last one.
Yeah.
I was trying to find the email, but, yeah.
So he's thrown it back to us?
Mm-hmm.
Right.
He wants more information.
I just don't think he wants to like, do it in like, bits and pieces, he wants like a global, like, one apple.
And that's probably true, it just becomes difficult for us to know what to seek in mitigation, if we don't know that the, if, for example, if we say, if we agree that we, that it should be limited to the 35 feet, say, for example, and I'm not suggesting that that's what we suggest, that limits the number of units that they put in, so therefore, we know that the impact is going to be a lot less than if they agree later on to make it, instead of 60 feet, or whatever the number was the last time we talked, 55 feet, which really doesn't do much as far as unit size. So just the fact that they're open to negotiation on it, without them coming back with anything further, makes it a little difficult for us to take the next step in discussing, okay, what else, what else do we, do we see?
I'm wondering if there's a way that we can propose that instead of a four-story, five-story, six-story, because obviously, we, we can only propose the things that are in our town, I'm assuming, so what if we propose a three-story at the road and a four-story, which takes off, it takes off one floor on either side, on, on either thing, and by my quick calculations, that would remove 11 two-bedrooms, two three-bedrooms, and nine one-bedrooms, so it would remove a total of 22 units, so we would be down to 52 units on that area. The setback is 23 feet, our zoning allows 25 feet, I'm not sure that it's worth arguing for two feet for that, because I, I don't know as if that's that much of a, I don't know if that's worth the ask, but.
The setback of 22 feet, where, what is that based on? Did they say that?
They did, in the lip, it says that they're, they're asking for 23 feet as opposed to our 25.
23 off of the street, or 23? I, I wouldn't argue that point, that three feet, I'm not going to, from my perspective, three feet's not going to make a huge difference, especially if we get a substantially reduced number of units, is, you know.
So I wasn't here last week, so I apologize, but based on Joel's response and what you both have just said, I would propose that we get our council to write a counterproposal that's all encompassing with what we want to see in an ideal solution if we were to move forward, even if it's not realistic, I mean, they threw everything under the sun into the initial lip application, and we found it outrageous, I don't see why we can't then counterpropose with everything that we're looking for, from building height down to mitigation, down to, I mean, based on the comment that Aaron submitted, that they supply water and sewer to the whole project. And then at least it punts the ball in their court to come back and say what they're willing to negotiate on and give us a better idea.
And I'm also wondering, Justine, what did you use, you said you put your pen to paper, what did you use to substantiate those numbers?
The plans. So I looked at the plans, and I took both the A building and the B building, and saw what the layouts were, and counted the bedrooms that were in Maynard and the bedrooms that were in, yeah, the bedrooms that were in neutral.
Because I would want to see them from, I would want to see their, their actual numbers before, you know, just saying, well, our calculations say, because, you know.
Right, right, so I mean, my theory is you take one story off, but by, again, by my, by my calculations, this is what, what it would look like.
I think that's what we propose, though, if we all like that, like, you take off this many two-bedrooms from this story, you know.
What you're doing then is, you know, Chris had an opposition the last time we spoke about talking about units, he wanted to talk about height, now we're back to talking about units.
Well, I'm kind of thinking that if you talk about height, you get the units.
I'd just be afraid that if.
I agree, but I think, I think we're back to where I was last time, and, you know, so I don't, you know, so if we're going to talk units, let's talk units.
What if we lob off the height, though, and they say, okay, but then we're going to leave you with a bunch of three-bedrooms, that would be my concern, and they changed the allocation.
Well, that's, that's important, too, is the number of bedrooms.
Right.
That's the whole height thing, I mean, you know, it's, height, units, it's all going to, I mean, you, you know, the units could be, they could say, oh, we have less units, but we have, bedrooms is the number, it's not units, it's bedrooms.
Right.
The concern is bedrooms, you know, your concern, the concern has to be bedrooms, because more bedrooms, you know, there's more potential for students and that type of thing, and that's, that's some people's big concern, is how many kids it's going to create in, in the school system.
Right.
So it's really not apartment units, it's bedrooms.
Right.
And if I take, if I take one floor off, but to, to your point, if I make, I take a floor off, but make everything a three-bedroom, I'm going to increase, you know, that actually is going to attract more.
And I think to Justine's point, I mean, that's great homework you did there, I, I think it's important that, that we do look, we do look at the amount of bedrooms, I think that'll be a good way to say, well, let's see if we can limit it to the number of bedrooms in our side of the, you know, town, because that'll minimize the impact on the school and everything else.
How does everyone feel about Aaron's point, though, about asking them to provide water and sewer just on a pragmatic basis to like the whole project?
It's okay with me.
Was that Aaron, or was that?
No, that was Aaron.
Or was that?
No, no, that was Aaron.
I think we just, I think we just.
Aaron's saying, says if they're going to, if they, why don't you just provide the whole?
No, that wasn't Aaron, that was, that was Wayne.
Was Wayne here?
Sorry.
Oh, was Wayne here?
He wrote a, he wrote a, he wrote a report.
Oh, okay, yeah, he wasn't, he wasn't here.
Yeah, but Aaron had the same.
I think Aaron would have concurred that.
Aaron had the same, you know.
Yeah.
For simplicity, not primarically, just, sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Well, I was, yeah, that's the discussion about, can you split it, can you split, you know, I don't, that's, that's even better, that's even better, let them, let them have, you know, let them take it off, they're going to, he's going to spend that kind of money to do what he's going to do, you know, the additional units that are potentially going to be in Maynard, what's, what's the difference?
Well, as I commented on the last time, they were so anxious to take our, our sewer to begin with without asking us, we can tell them, they can give it to Acton, they can give it to Acton without us asking them.
Well, I think that, yeah, I think we have to ask.
No, Joel has, we have to tell Joel, and Joel has to ask.
Right, 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 right.
Joel has, Joel has to ask, we were talking to Joel, we're not, we're not.
So I, I think to Melissa's point, we got to come to some kind of a consensus here on what is it that we want to give to, to give to council so that they could put together, based on your recommendation.
Well, it sounds like we all agree on the water sewer issue.
Okay.
Like, it sounds like that's addressed, I think, does anybody have an objection to proposing a lower building height?
Well, we talked about, initially, we talked about 35 feet, was it?
Well, 35 feet's the regulation, is our zone, yeah.
Yeah.
So, do you want, I, I don't know, I say we just go with that for our counterproposal.
Yeah, I agree.
But I think we put it on with a, like, contingent stipulation on the units, like, you can't then dump three bedrooms on us, it has to stay proportional to.
Well, yeah, I would say that if they're going to, if they take it up, it has to stay in proportion to what the lip is today.
Right.
The bedroom number, that's okay with me.
Yep, I would, I would not.
Or in the alternative, only one bedrooms.
And that's fine, too.
That's okay, too. Fit extra.
Why can't we put that in there?
Right, they wouldn't, they wouldn't be able to sell those.
I know.
Rent those.
And I wasn't, again, I wasn't here last week, but I want to make sure that if Adam is going to redline this, he addresses those paragraphs that have the contingencies where everything is off the table, if, you know, anyone challenges it, because those are just so one-sided.
We really didn't get into any of the substantive legal, actually, Adam said, once we get into, once we have established sort of the, the bigger picture issues, or maybe it's the smaller picture issues, the bigger picture issues, he can, he works out.
Okay, perfect, yeah, I think as long as he does it, and like, gives us a chance to review it before it gets sent to Joel, like, I think we'd probably all be agree on that.
Absolutely.
I think he pretty much said, though, that, that he didn't really have too much I think he pretty much said, though, that, that he didn't really have too much more to add to that, correct? I feel like I asked that last week.
As far as mitigation issue?
No, no, not mitigation.
He didn't want to comment on mitigation.
No, no, because he doesn't, no, as far, as far as the, as far as the wording of the document himself, the stuff that he had redlined and everything.
No, at the time, he didn't, more than what he had already provided.
Right, 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 there wasn't anything in addition.
Right, but he, I think he agrees with what you're asking right now, um, yeah, so, like, he, he definitely agrees, that he'll clean up the wording to make sure it's protective of the town.
Yeah.
Um, I have serious safety concerns that I think we need to have mitigated, um, just knowing that our only fatalities of people crossing the street happen there, and having, you know, the condos across the street and this one, about having better management of how they're gonna control pedestrian flow across one, across Powder Mill.
Yeah, they, um, and actually, the, the presentation that they've made thus far is that there wouldn't be, there wouldn't be anything other than a turn lane.
Yeah.
No crosswalk, no bike lane, no, um, um, you know, even when you're talking sidewalk, and again, issue with, with Acton is not our business necessarily, but it will be Maynard residents walking in that direction if they live in that area, and when you get down to that area where the bridge is, there's no sidewalk, um, on the, whatever, whatever the side of the road is that our people would be...
On the other side, there is, on the other side, there is.
Yeah, but it enters the bridge, it enters the bridge, and it's just, it's part of the bridge.
Well, there's nothing on the other side of the street either, if people from, like, Deer Path wanted to come access the river or anything, um, so that's concerning.
Yeah, the, and the, the car dealership puts their cars right up to the edge of the road, basically.
You see the people that work there, like, trying to dirt across the street, it's terrifying.
Yeah. Uh, so, those are certainly issues, and, um, we had a discussion, um, you were here for that when, uh, the comment about our complete streets program that would need to be complied with regardless, you know, of, uh, and so, at this point, their mitigation that's been proposed that I see, and this is where we go with this, I don't know, but the, um, the mitigation that they've proposed is limited relative to fulfilling complete streets requirements in that, in that area.
And to your point, Melissa, eventually Stratus is gonna come online, something's gonna happen there, so some development's gonna take place there, so that, to your point, yes, we need to make sure that we get some safety procedures in place there.
Yeah, I don't see how that, that may get by, uh, with any substantial-sized project, um, you know, regardless of how much they put in Acton, without having some type of, of street crossing and, and, and streetlights, um, et cetera. To your point, um, Melissa, the two fatal accidents that we've had in twenty years have been at that location with nobody living there.
Right.
Uh, other than the seniors that live down the street.
Well, yeah, on, on Powder Mill.
On Powder Mill.
Would you, so, Mr. Chairman, if you will, I, would you like me to, because I don't recall what the traffic assessment, I just don't recall what the recommendations...
No, we talked about the traffic a little bit last week with Aaron, and because our GPW has the final say, and it was kind of that, you know, the complete streets thing is something that he's got in his, in his set of requirements, so...
In the, in the memorandum agreement, I do agree that we should clear, just clarify, I say, like, you do about that.
So, last week, right, when we talked about the MOA, when it, as it released the traffic and everything, the main question that we were all kind of kicking around a little bit, including Adam, was what responsibility and what authorities does the state of Massachusetts Department of Transportation have over that piece of road? Which we, which comes to the conclusion that it's, it's zero, and, but, the rules, basically, still apply type of thing. So, we have, he was gonna clarify that, he was gonna try and clarify that, wasn't he? I think he was gonna get us clarification at some point on exactly how that fits.
We have to be careful, though, because Adam mentioned that, and even if we, you know, A, um, Aaron was sitting back there saying, well, I have these rules and regulations, he was talking relative to, uh, to sewer and wa, uh, sewer and water at the time, uh, but the same thing applies to, um, uh, to streets, I would imagine. They can file for a waiver with, if, even if we, even if we have this as part of our requirements in a, and that's, I guess, the issue, is doesn't, does an MOA supersede any request that they have for a waiver at, before the, um, before the ZBA? So, for example, they could say, oh, it'll be, it'll be way too expensive and too much of a financial burden on us to do your complete streets requirements, so therefore, we're not going to, we're gonna file for a waiver for that. And same thing, oh, uh, it's too expensive for us to, to, uh, pay your water and sewer hookup fees, so we're gonna file for a waiver on those. And Adam seemed to suggest that they'll file a waiver on everything they possibly can.
Yes, they will.
And if that's the case, even if, we have to make sure that if we're asking certain things, that just because we put it into our MOA, we're not assuming we're going to get it, because they may file for a waiver on it.
And that's what Adam said, too, similar to the complete streets concept, even though they, per the town's policies should be, you know, abiding by the police's policy, Adam recommended, and I also agree, that we should be clear in that, in our MOA, as well as any expected adherence to, to regulations that we have, so that they don't just blanket waiver, we say, look, we can bank a waiver, everything but this and this and this, whatever the case may be.
So, what you're saying, sorry to interrupt, but I just want to clarify, because I don't know if you two are saying the same thing.
Okay.
So, what David is saying is even if they sign the MOA, they can waive it.
No, so I, I would disagree, although I'm not a lawyer, but I, I would disagree, because that would still be a breach of the contract.
That's what I wanted to clarify, because A...
There's no way they could, because that would be like a meeting of the minds, so I think if we say, like, they're agreeing to X, Y, and Z, you know, we could add in language, say they won't file waivers on it, and it's probably superfluous language, but I would say that as long as that language is in there, even without that, they have to abide by that, because we had this meeting of the minds, it was contingent on them accepting the terms of the agreement, and they can't say, well, ha-ha, we found like a loophole in this contract by applying to the state for waivers. I think that would be a bad faith negotiation, would null and void the terms of the original agreement.
Yes, that would, that's my, that would be, based on, my experience is mostly in procurement law, but yeah, that's...
That it gets specified, that the, there is to be no waivers on, relative to complete streets requirements and hookup fees, and, you know.
Yeah, you kind of have to, kind of have to...
Building heights, like, if we're gonna stipulate on that, yeah.
That's right.
That'll, I mean, you, those will come as we start to work through it, if that's where we're headed, you know, to those...
That's a good point.
Those, those waiver requests, because, you know, as we're sitting here, you're thinking of certain things, but once we sit and start to talk about some other more in-depth items, you're gonna say, oh, we don't, oh, we can't have a waiver on that, on certain things.
As long as we don't let it get away from us before, uh...
Well, that's what I'm saying, we, you know, it's, so, you're gonna, you know, here's a list of five or six things to have, you know, Adam address, in a, in a, in some way with Joel through the MOA.
That's right.
Height, units, da-da-da-da, and then, you know, as we go through, you're gonna, we're gonna, I'm sure we're gonna come across more items and issues that we, as a board and a community and a town and everything, feel as though this is important enough that, you know, you're agreeing now that you won't seek a waiver for these certain things.
In the course of the...
In the course of the MOA.
Developing the MOA, yes, I agree.
So that, so that when it gets to the next step, whether it be planning board or zoning board of appeals, they don't have the opportunity to circumvent the MOA.
That's right, and I do totally believe that this is our opportunity, that the MOA is the opportunity.
So, so, to that, to that, to that, right, has anyone else, does anyone else have this lip application in their hands, in, you know, no, no, I'm talking about people in Maynard, you know, planning board, anyone else that's, you know, giving it, you know, because if there are...
It's been public, but I'm...
But, but what I'm saying is, if there are things that the community, and the community is represented by the planning board or others, has concerns about up front, we ought to know what their concerns are from, like, Bill Nemdris or somebody, so that we can address those where it's appropriate in the MOA.
Okay.
I can tell you that the, um, the Affordable Housing Trust, who was an addressee on, on the lip when it was first sent to the town in July, has never been presented with a copy of the lip.
Okay, beyond making it public, because it's all been...
Beyond making it public, but it was never given to the chairman, who was an addressee on the letter, he never got it.
Well, then that's on them, but you're, you're right, we can, I can make sure that he gets it directly, but I, I just wanted to clarify that it's been on our website, it's been on Board docs, it's been passed out at meetings, like, I, I'm not, I don't mean to say, to say that, that I can't get it to him, I can, I just meant that we haven't been hiding it, but I, I would say, um, I, I am recalling now, that Historical Commission provided you a letter last, last week, making, asking you to consider the inclusion, just as you're saying, make sure that it's clear, whatever the intentions are of those two historical properties, so...
Well, I was kind of, I was kind of disappointed that Jack had left, because I want to ask him, well, he was here, exactly what, you know, I think, Joel, in, in his MOA and in his literature, has kind of said one thing, and I don't know that that's what our Historical Commission agrees or not, you know, so, kind of wanted to get that feedback from, so we need to get the feedback from the Historical Commission on what are, what are their expectations, and what do they think, you know, because one of them, one of the overriding things that continues to be seen from, from Joel Khan is that one of those two buildings is trash.
Yeah, so the Historical Commission, I was at a meeting not too long ago, and we talked about it briefly, and I think there's acknowledgement that one of the buildings might be past, um, salvaged just on the cost-benefit analysis, but neither, I don't think the Historical Commission, I don't want to speak for them, wants to see the houses destroyed either, they're, they want to find a solution that's economical, but also preserves the historical nature of those two homes.
But I, I was confused, because there, there are actually three buildings that are there, two are in Maynard, one is in Acton.
Are they housed, is the third one a house?
The, three different historic buildings, I believe.
Okay.
One is in Acton, and the one that's in Acton is just destroyed, it looks like the, uh, the one that's over towards the CCU building.
It's way, way over near the, near the A-frame building, the Marwan, the Marwan, it's the last, it's the last piece of property on the left, as you go out of Maynard, before the, um...
And it's hidden by bushes and everything else, it looks like, uh...
Well, there should be, there was someone living there for a while.
It was a band, it looked like a band.
There was a guy in there, because the guy, the car used to be there in the morning and not gone at night, and that car hasn't been there for, since they bought the property.
That was the one I was, I thought he was talking about, where he said, he saw people upstairs, and the floor started to bend, so he thought it was...
No, that one, I don't, I don't think that one has an upstairs, it looks like a little capey kind of, like a bungalow type of thing, real low, the one I'm talking about, that's the last building.
The grayish, the grayish, was it a grayish building?
I think it's red, too.
Reddish?
It's reddish, it's kind of a red building.
So, either way, either way, we need to clarify how many, how many...
If you go out of your, if you go out of deer hedge and you take a right, across the street from...
There's a green one, there's a blue one, and then there's one that I'm not sure.
But it's further down, it's after the end of the fence they put up.
Red, red and blue are Maynard, though, right?
Yeah.
The red one is a Maynard, the blue one is a Maynard.
Yeah.
The third, the third one, it's a shack, but, up until about a year ago, when it was, there was someone living there, but there's nobody in there, in there anymore, I don't think, but...
And the other issue that I, that I brought up last week, relative to those historic buildings, if indeed they are moved, um, that it, it's clarified in any agreement that the hookups, uh, because if they're moved, they have to be re-hooked up to electricity, to, uh, all of those expenses should not, should not fall on the town of Maynard, they, um...
Is that a consensus, I just want to be clear?
Yeah, yeah, definitely. Water, the sewer, the electric, the cost of that.
The, the, the other utilities will be the, I mean, the cable and the electric will be there on their own, but the water and sewer is what we would be concerned with.
On the town side, right. Is that, I can write, I don't include that, actually.
I mean, I kind of feel like that, wouldn't that be, I mean, it's to dispel everything else, but I feel like...
It almost seems like it would be common sense, but, but I wouldn't say anything's obvious, judging on some of the things that we've dealt with.
That's what Adam Costas' recommendation was to, write it in.
Yeah, he, he says, don't assume anything's obvious, so...
So, I still feel like the elephant in this agreement is the mitigation money that they put in there, and I, I don't, I'm curious to hear what everyone else thinks on it, I'm sure we've talked about it before, but like, I, I don't know what that right number is, and does that number change if they're willing to have Acton supply the water and sewer?
Well, it changes from the standpoint that if, if, well, would change, it would change from his perspective, I don't know if it changes from our perspective, but from, from his perspective, four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars comes out day one, because he's no longer gonna line that pipe, or he's gonna say he's not gonna line that pipe. Now, I would say, not just for having it there, you should reline the pipe and be a good neighbor for four hundred and twenty-five thousand, but I don't know if he'd agree with that mitigation.
Or we just ask for that money in a general fund, and we can apply it as we see fit.
Yeah, I, 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 you know, I don't know what the right mitigation money is, and...
Because we have to come back with that number.
Despite, despite what he put out there the first time through, you know, there was never really anything agreed to, there was, you know...
But even the first time through, I get that we're not giving them the water and sewer, selling it to them anymore, but to me, that tells me that they have that money available, you know, because that was their first offer, so they have at least that out there in the pot to supply, so I feel like...
Well, except, I agree, except for the fact that I don't know what the cost is gonna be to go under the, under the river and up the hill and build a tank to, for them. Grandmother's House, we go with, um, what, the sewage, carry a bucket of crap to grandmother's house every day, that's what they're doing, but...
They said they had an alternate, alternate route, I don't know, you know, if they...
Either way, it, it's either that, it's either that.
They have to get over the river, even at the bridge.
They have to cross a river somewhere, and if they, if they don't go straight across, they have to go down
Underneath the river.
Under the bridge like we have at Powder Mill.
Yep.
And then up High Street behind, in front of, behind Acton Ford, and then over to the left, so, it's, it's still a long way, so...
I don't know, my whole thing is that I think they're eventually gonna come back to us for the water and sewer.
I, we see how that's going.
I think that's, now we're wanting them to supply all the water and sewer.
That ship may have sailed.
I think it's gone, but I, I think even without that, there's so much that needs to be mitigated, so I just want to make sure that we come back with a, like, we ask for what is appropriate, you know, if not more, knowing that we're gonna be negotiating it, and I don't know what that number is, and I don't know what we have for data from prior projects or surrounding town projects that are similar.
Well, I think that's probably some research to do, um, to, to see what did, what did the Muse get for mitigation at the time, what did Acton get in their project over at, um, uh, behind Jay Manning's place over in...
The Avalon?
The Avalon.
Yeah.
Um, you know, similar-sized, proposed-sized projects, even though the maj, the majority of this project, and if we shrink it down, as I hope we do, uh, might still remain in Acton, we're still gonna seek the, we're still gonna see the impact.
I think our impact might even be bigger, because all those projects are kind of off the beaten path a little, whereas we're on a main gateway to the town.
Yeah, I agree with you.
And, and to your point, because I think that's something that, um, I was talking to Greg about, that is the gateway, that's, it's gonna have to look very appealing as you come into the, into the town, so we gotta be careful of what it looks like when you come in.
And that people can get through, not just have bumper, bumper traffic.
Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
So, we, just through some of the studies that we had done, and the research over the summertime, and then, and leading up to the receipt of the MOA and whatnot, we do have some proposals that I could provide you, like a list of, of possible mitigations, including the relining of the, of the sewer system.
So...
I, I could just come up with a laundry list, so to speak, of things.
That's okay, I mean, I'm, I'm fine with that, that way of looking at it, but I, I mean, we have several, is everyone satisfied with the several we have to start with, knowing that it's the beginning?
Yeah, and I think if, um, Adam could just redline some of the legal issues of how he would change the language, so that we could have a chance to kind of absorb that and talk about it.
Okay.
So, so, I, what I've heard is, is thirty-five-foot building height with, um...
Two bedrooms.
Apartments that are configured with the same percentage as was proposed in the original, uh...
Include the parapet?
What?
With the, I don't know what the language is for that, but I think everybody understands what I'm saying, with...
No, no, I agree.
The same, the same distribution of one, two, and three bedrooms as was proposed in the original...
Like, conforming with the original list.
Project, complete streets, um, requirements that are fulfilled with, um, including crosswalks and, and streetlights at the main, main entrance to the location. What else did we talk about?
Um, the, the waiver list.
Yeah, with that...
But that'll be built, that'll be, that'll, that'll grow as we go, I think, so...
Perhaps if we went with those first ones and said, we're gonna have more to talk about, and said, and say, are you open to the, to discussing these things, we'll see how they come back.
I don't know if we want to get, do it that open-ended, though, like, if I were just negotiating this in, like, a private deal, I would put in what I want to see in that agreement, just like they did, and then let them redline it back to us.
That's fine.
I think we need to be more...
Then we'll need more time to, to go over that.
Right, but I think we need to be more assertive, you know, and, and hold our ground.
Absolutely.
And if we just say to them, like, how do, are you open to this, like, I don't really care if they're open to it, it's what we want, so we put it in, and if they want to counter, yeah.
I agree.
Okay.
Okay, that's the direction of the board, I can reach, I can, I can have a, a new draft drawn up by Adam. I don't know, I, we'll get it as quickly as we can, and, um...
I don't think we're in a rush.
No, no, I, I meant that...
Joel's in a rush, but we're not.
We're not.
We're good.
And I can try to get it back to the board by day two.
It's the holidays, I mean...
It's the holidays, we, people take time off, Greg told us.
Not yet, the holidays.
It's holiday season.
It is the holidays.
Okay, I'm like, I'm gonna go to work tomorrow, federal, federal day off.
Tomorrow?
Yep.
Tomorrow is, yeah. Tomorrow's a federal, federal day of mourning.
Oh, yeah.
Stock market's closed.
No mail, no stock market.
Old Town Hall's...
Just gonna lose money staying home tomorrow.
Cold-hearted, I guess.
You can come to, you can come work for me.
All right.
What, I gotta lower some manholes?
Can you get on the, even in front of shots?
All right, so, so we're gonna get in touch with, we're gonna get in touch with, we're gonna get in touch with Adam, and give him these thoughts, and, and have him come back with what he thinks it would look like, and then we'll approve or disapprove, and send it to Joel, and if there's any additions in the meantime, if anyone has any additions in the meantime, just send them to Greg individually, so that we're not violating open meeting laws, and then we'll, we'll get the document back from Adam at, at that time, if that's, if everyone agrees to that.
That sounds good.
Okay. Moving on, Town Administrator's Report, I mean, did you just sit at home and just throw things at a barboard all week, or what, kid?
Yes. No, I just...
That was very nice, it was a lot to it this week, too.
There's a lot of stuff.[1673.46]
There's a lot of things you're doing.
There's a lot of stuff going on.
I, I just go to meetings all day. It's my, it's the hard workers in Town Hall and at School Department and what, they do all the actual-
We have to make ourselves a city if you keep this up.
We are a small city. If you're, if you had, if there was anyone who had any doubt to that, all you have to do is look at the four pages of work in the last three weeks.
All good stuff, all good stuff, though.
No, there's, I'm hesitant to highlight one department over another, but I do that anyway sometimes.
I appreciate it. I mean, it's a lot of good information, and there's a lot of things in there, by the way, that, at least from my perspective, I don't know how anyone else feels, when we get to read your, your Town Administrator's Report, there's a lot of things that appear in your Town Administrator's Report that were the type of things that were taking up some of the space in our, our questions at the end. Like, answer, you know, our answer, our questions are answered in advance because they're in, they're in your report, so-
Okay, good.
So it's, no, it's appreciated.
Okay, well, maybe a couple things just to, thank you, Mr. Chairman. One, it's an adorable story that the Girl Scouts went to help out the veteran while he was away at the Veterans Day Parade.
That is.
That's super cool.
That was really great. So, so I commend, you know, the Maynard Daisy Scouts led by Amy Bombardier, Bombardier. So that was great. And then a couple of the upcoming events. Well, first of all, I thought it was an outstanding event for the sip and stroll, that seemed, as far as I've been told, until my police chief talking otherwise.
They said it was the most crowds they had.
Yeah.
Was it?
Yeah, that's what-
So it was a great turnout, it was crowded.
That's what the Business Alliance said, you know.
It was good. It was, it was very, very good. And then the Holiday Sale at Art Space was last weekend, and then this weekend, it's a very, very busy time around Maynard, this weekend is the WAVM's Beacon Santa Telethon beginning on Friday, December the 7th at 8:00 p.m., and it goes for 40 hours. And the Jingle All the Way 5K is this Saturday, the next morning, at 8:30 a.m., bright and early, followed by the annual Christmas Day Parade starting at 5:00 p.m. So, tis the season, very busy these days.
See, it is the holiday season.
All right.
That's all, Mr. Chairman.
So, I don't know, have we, are we walking in this parade? Have we been invited?
You folks are all invited to us.
Okay, I wasn't sure, I hadn't seen anything official. All right, I hadn't seen it anywhere in any correspondence or anything, so I know in the past we have, and is it just riddled down to the police station now, the police?
I can get some details, I'll provide-
So is it only, because I only see Sweeney, Chris Sweeney's name, so I'm just wondering if it's just the Police Relief Association now, or if it's both still, or how, how that's going to be.
The fire department is actually paying for the fire association.
Okay.
That's a good question.
I just didn't, I just didn't know, yeah, I just didn't know. The other thing, we just talked about the gateway on 62, and that's the one that the woman had come in a couple of times, back, way back, and asked about it, and she said she does the flowers, she wants to make sure it stays nice, blah, blah, you know.
The sign says Maynard, welcome to Maynard, the blue sign.
It sits kind of across from Wendy's.
Yeah.
Up the hill a little bit, so anyways, there still isn't one on Route 27.
Oh.
It's-
Oh, by the Acton.
Is, when you go by Brown Street, when you come across, I don't, I don't see it.
I'm sorry, I'm making sure we were talking about the same place.
If you come into Act, come from Acton, on the right, on the right side, where is it?
I heard last night that they put up a sign.
It's built, it's been about 24 hours.
What?
No, it's there.
Since when?
Like, two days ago.
Literally, since when? Because I'm serious, and I went by there the other night, I said, that sign isn't there still.
Two days ago.
Was it?
Yeah.
Oh, because it wasn't, it wasn't like 72 hours ago.
No, I, no, I was not kidding when I said about 24 hours.
So, since, so, since Friday night it went in?
Yeah.
Uh, yes, since probably Monday.
It's one of those pop-up things.
Oh, okay, because I came down, I came, I came Friday, it's, all right, I'll go by and look because-
Jimmy Fenton's property.
You should update your-
The sign that was supposed to be-
Supposed to be there, they put it up.
I think Wednesday, because on my Wednesday morning drive, it wasn't there, but by Wednesday, by Monday night, for I had two meetings.
So, is it not there in the dark? Is it not lit?
It leaves it.
It's a dark sign.
It's supposed to be lit.
Oh, I didn't know that.
I believe.
Well, as, as I've explained to Greg, it's not exactly what was promised, but it's better than nothing.
Yeah, okay.
I bet I can ask about the lighting.
Okay. The other thing is, okay.
If it's not what was promised, then we're-
It's not what was promised, we should have a discussion about what was promised.
We should pull up the agreement, right? It's written?
The original, it's a long conversation.
I'll look on my way home, see if it has lights.
We'll do some research.
I'll go around. Oh, when you go home tonight, take a look.
Yeah.
I'll look into it.
When you go home tonight, take a look, will you?
He saw it, he's the one who's on the other way.
It's on my other way out.
If it's lit, if it's lit-
Then I have to look this way. There's always a, there's always a Maynard police finest sitting right there, I can't go.
Okay, all right, so anyways, last time we were here, a couple of times ago, Mr. Tommo inquired about our cemetery in the, and whatnot, and in the interim, there's been, I received some mail about MGL Chapter 115, Section 9, which governs veterans' graves. So Mass General Law, Chapter 115, Section 9, Mass, it's veterans' graves, we should probably take a look at it, because it says we should do certain things, and I don't believe we're doing them.
Okay.
So, and my last question would be for you, Becky. I know that a good friend passed away, so who is now the holder or the designate for the Post Road King?
For the Boston Post King.
Yeah.
Paul Boothroyd said, very soon we will have a new recipient, and they'll bring us the information so we can-
Oh, okay.
Get our mini plaque created, and have a little event in-
All right. I just, I just know that I, Mr. Safka passed, and so I knew it was a while ago, but I hadn't seen anything, so I just want to, because that's always a nice little thing. But other than that, I'm all set. See everybody at the parade, I guess. Melissa, do you have anything?
I was just going to say thank you for a wonderful sip and stroll, everyone who came out and supported the local businesses, and to all the business owners who stayed open and did special things for that event. And I am sorry, but I will not be at the Christmas parade because I ironically have a family Hanukkah celebration that night.
Okay. How can you argue with that?
Sorry.
So, Justine?
Same thing, I think sip and stroll was great. This past weekend was a lot of fun. I wanted to acknowledge, I went to the Art Space also, they did a great holiday sale. And as I was walking into Art Space, I noticed the new sidewalks that have been put up on Summer Street. They've done a good job with that, you know, it's just nice to see the town improving, and I think that that's what we strive for, is constant improvement. You know, we may not be perfect at all times, but we, as long as we keep trying to improve, I think that's the goal. You know, they did a great, like I said, the sip and stroll was great. I also will not be, unfortunately, marching in the parade, but that's because I'll be supporting the telethon, and I will be there, so. That's about it.
Won't be over by then?
No, Sunday. It's open Sunday, it's there till Sunday.
Sunday, oh, anyways.
Forty hours, and she's going to be there most of the time.
All right.
A lot of the time.
All right, so, oh, the parade's on a Saturday.
Yeah.
Yes.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Yeah.
No, I know, I know we approved it, but I'm looking at it, and I was thinking the whole time was on Sunday, so, okay. My apologies, it's on Saturday.
Last year was on Sunday, wasn't it?
Last year was on Sunday, yeah.
It's usually on Sunday, I think.
All right, David?
Yeah, Justine, actually, sort of, I can figure it out, two of the things you talked about. First off, the sidewalks. Greg, have you gotten any feedback from any of the residents along Summer Street that there might be like a disconnect between what they had prior, their walkway coming out of their house, and then the sidewalk is sort of a lip, where now they have, it's a raised sidewalk over what they had?
I, I'll have to check with DBW. I, have I personally, I don't recall, but I'll check with-
I can tell you, because I talked to Aaron about it.
Okay.
And it was, but they seem to have gone, they've now gone out, and not all of them, there's, well, there's a, they've, they've paved on both sides in cement, up to and smoothed it out.
Right.
In most places. Now, I will say that the conversation, an earlier conversation, because I said, how come we're putting, you know, concrete as opposed to tar, you know, pavement? Because that's what the original was, and the deal was, I guess the Chapter 70 money was to replace it as original, and it was originally concrete sidewalks.
Yeah.
So anyway, there's a couple of places along that road where people built certain little things on their own, where they crossed, they, without asking, they went and crossed the sidewalk. They put in brick or, so where that stuff was, that stuff's gone.
Yeah.
So that, that was a concern for some, but anywhere else where it was, there was a little bit of, as you look at it, you know, when they put the forms in, there was, there was some, some lips, they've, they're going to smooth them out. There's a couple of places where, for just other reasons, where there's, there's not really a way to smooth it out and make it level, level, but they've done the best they can, so there may still be a couple of people with concerns, but for the most part, at least halfway up, they've, they've paved on either side of the concrete.
Okay, good. I just heard from some residents that said that there was-
I toured it today, and I saw the owner of Detour, I don't recall his name, but he was, he was, he was at, just coincidentally probably, speaking to residents. So, so he is personally out there, I can't remember his name, but he's, they're moving fast, too.
Yeah.
And anyway, so I would imagine that he is addressing individuals as they approach.
I think it looks great, so, you know, but, you know, for somebody who lives there that suddenly, if they have an elderly resident that comes walking out and they trip, that's not good, so.
It does look good, and to that point, I'm sorry for speaking, I know what you're selecting, Gavin, but I, something that was pointed out to me is that in the past, a lot of vehicles park on the sidewalks.
Yep.
If we want to keep those sidewalks looking great, we can't have that, you know, we can't have vehicles parking on the sidewalks.
Can't have them anymore.
I-
You can hardly get on them anymore unless you-
You can't pass anybody to-
No, you could, you could, you could, before you just pulled onto it, now you have to go-
But even if they try-
Around, oh, yeah.
I just, for whatever, public, please don't park on the sidewalks.
Okay.
And then to piggyback on Justine's comment about where she will be on Saturday, good luck to WAVM and the kids at the high school, and this is, this is one of those Maynard, Maynard things, you know, 40 years or whatever it's been that they've been doing the telethon, and, you know, good luck to the kids, I hope they make a lot of money and that they have as much fun as they always have, and, you know, do as proud as they always do. Then lastly, any idea what happened to the big flag?
What big flag?
The, the one down at Lumen Field, the gigantic-
What happened to it?
It's not there.
It's not there.
No, I, no.
It left, there was a, there was a windstorm.
Uh-oh.
And that evening-
It's the first I've heard of this, I'm sorry.
Yeah, and so that night, it was raining and whatever, and so that night I drove by, and it was there.
Hmm.
And then I drove by the next day, and it's been about a week, two weeks now that it's been gone. So I thought maybe the police department went and took it down because they didn't want it to rip, or they didn't want it to-
Isn't that the school, school?
No, that's-
No, no, but I'm saying it's-
DBW maintains the fields.
But the, I-
Yeah, okay.
So I don't know who took it. The lights are still on, but it lights up a blank, an empty pole now.
Okay.
The flag's gone.
Okay.
Vic, you had something?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a comment in addition to what you said. You must remember that the WAVM telethon is the biggest contributor to the Beacon Santa. They've done it for I don't know how many years now, and it's supported, and evidently it's now grown to the deal where Comcast allows them to tie into some of the surrounding towns.
Surrounding towns, right, yeah. I think they raised over a million dollars or something.
Yeah.
Over the course of time.
For three days. And if it wasn't for the Beacon Santa, I don't think the Beacon could do as much as they do on their charity work. My only objection has been, and it's been this way for I don't know how many years, is that these kids raise a substantial amount of money, WAVM, and yet, most of that money leaves Maynard. Nobody has ever sat down with the Beacon and say, look, if we raise $35,000 in Maynard, we should be able to keep X amount of money, and I guess nowadays they're giving out gift certificates within the community. But it works, and it's fine, and, you know-
You know what, Vic? I don't know if the-
It's a little fine tuning at this point.
I don't know if the kids themselves and the people that are donating, yes, Maynard is important to all of them, but I think the fact, the spirit of the season and the fact that they are giving to people in need, and that's the really important thing, and yes, maybe if more money could come back to Maynard, that'd be great, but as long as it's going to the community that, of people in need, I think the kids that are doing it are being satisfied with that, and, because that's the spirit of the whole event. It was never, I don't think ever intended to be Maynard-centric, but rather regional cent, region-centric, so, you know, I get your point, but it's, I think it's, regardless, it's, it does its purpose.
Everybody's got a different way to look at it.
Anything else, David?
Point is worth-
Armand, anything?
Yeah, well, I also had the opportunity to take part in sip and stroll, and Melissa, thank you for being one of the sponsors for the tree lighting.
Yes.
And Linda.
And Linda, that's right, Linda. It was really a great event, and the weather obviously helped, but that was a great event. And I don't know, did you guys see the letter that was issued from one of the residents about saying whether or not they could, it was a little late, but closing the streets, which, you know, I don't know if it makes any sense in the future to think about that, but I don't think you need it, but there was a lot of people walking around, so.
Traffic, we've talked about it, is the MBA, and traffic's so minimal usually on those nights, and, you know, the cost of closing the streets is, you know, really significant, you know.
Cost of money, yeah, exactly. I mean, I don't think there was an impact, but I just thought that, you know, in fact, you were watching the reactions of the people with the cars passing by, they were, whoa, what's going on, and, you know, so it was kind of cool. And then the, the other thing is, a few weeks ago, I had the opportunity to take part in the forum that was, I was invited by the high school, the school committee. They hired a consultant, looking into seeing how they could improve on the education for the high schoolers, preparing them for college.
Career.
Career, yeah, and I forgot the name of the, very impressive, and I was, I was honored to be part of that and offer some of my advice, I guess, based on having two girls.
What, did you interview your kids, or?
No, no, this was different. This was like a focus group, they were doing different, different types of focus group with students and alumnis and parents and all kinds of, so it was kind of interesting. And finally, I want to commend the board tonight for coming to some kind of consensus and agreeing to some recommendations to go back to Joel Kahn, and I commend you guys for doing that, I think was great, great progress.
Slow progress. I'm not even going to say it, I'm going to wait and just take my time. Motion to adjourn. All in favor?